Yes, let the record reflect that all members are present.
Okay. Let's say please join councilmember Lorotano and the pledge of allegiance in voting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. We pray for those in need, we pray for those who could participate, we pray for those who could not participate. Thank you.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of Goodyear.
Oh, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay, great, seeing none. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda one through three by title only?
Number one, approval of minutes. Number two, authorize the termination of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Phoenix and the City of Goodyear for fire service training recorded with Maricopa County Recorder 1227-2018 as number 2018-0944-148. Approve and authorize the city manager or designate to enter into a new intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Goodyear and the City of Phoenix to conduct various joint fire department training activities. Number three, authorize the expenditure of funds for the Astraia Bridge project in an amount not to exceed $3,700,000.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, will the council please enter a motion in a second to approve one, two, three? I've got both a motion and a second. Let's see, please open the voting. Thank you. The motion unanimously passes. All right, let's see what we have here. Next up, there are two public hearings on the agenda. First public hearing item is to consider as a rezoning of application, 51.25 acres from the planned area development to multifamily-18 with the Lux at Ballpark Village Development, if I pronounced that correctly, regulations MF-18 with a pad overlay open for public hearing. Go ahead, Christian.
Good evening, Mayor Pizzillo and city council. My name is Christian Williams, principal planner here with Goodyear. And I'm before you this evening with a request from Andy Yocum and Paul Gilbert to conduct a rezoning on a property within the city. To remind you, the property is context within the greater Ballpark Village. This property is located at the southwest corner of Astraia and Yuma. For those at home, you can see the pointer. For you on the dais, it's just to the left and down of the star in the middle of the map. It is the last privately owned development at the corner of Astraia Parkway and Yuma Road that seeks a rezone from the original 2008 city center PAD zonings to a new zoning category. So let's talk about the project Velux at Ballpark Village. The property is approximately 51 acres. It's located in central Goodyear and it is within Ballpark Village, again southwest corner of Astraia Parkway and Yuma Road. It is located on the map in the red box with the star in the middle. And the underlying zoning of the property is planned area development with an underlying zoning of residential and retail. And the property is again right here on the map. So zooming in a little closer, you can see that the project is located in that red box on the left side of the screen. It is south of the vacant city-owned property. It is north and east of the Astraia Vista single-family development. And it is west of a property that was recently rezoned to Fulton Homes at Ballpark Village. And as a note, this property does not fall within the Goodyear Airport DNR noise area. For a really quick history on the property, in 2007, the Goodyear Ballpark was built and constructed. And in 2008, through ordinance, these 51 acres was zoned city center southwest PAD. And the underlying, again, use of this property was residential and retail. This property could have yielded as much as 2,063 units or 40 units per acre and approximately 70,000 square feet of retail. And if you recall from other rezoning cases, in 2021, in a response to the city hall and civic square being moved north of the Interstate 10, a major general plan amendment occurred in December of 2021. The former city center overlay, which used to be on this property, was removed and it was replaced with a neighborhood as the underlying land use category in the general plan with a village center overlay. As it relates to other multifamily in Goodyear between Interstate 10 on the north, future SR 30 on the south, Perryville on the west, and Bullard on the east, there are 13 established multifamily communities, one of which is for the ballpark or for the baseball team. Eight are traditional garden style and four are single-family rental. Those are shown in orange. Shown in purple, there are nine under development or recently completed. Four of those are garden style, five of those are single-family rental. And then shown in yellow on the map, there are 20 that are entitled for multifamily. 10 of those are likely to be single-family rental or townhouse-style rental. Eight are likely to be garden style and one is senior or age-targeted. And then one has a mix of products. That'd be that Anton case that we discussed a couple of months back. Shown in blue is the one case today, Velux at Ballpark Village. So the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to MF-18 multifamily residential district with a planned area development overlay to facilitate the development of stacked flat-style buildings, townhouse-style buildings, and cottage-style buildings that will all be multifamily. And that proposes to have a range of products similar to that Anton case that you heard a couple of months back. The PAD overlay requires a minimum density of 14 units per acre on the north side of that site, which is north of Papago Street. That's because the village center overlay goes approximately over that area of that development. And the density cap of this development is 18 units per acre, which is in line with the MF-18 zoning category. The use of the PAD overlay tool is justified as this development, the type of product they're trying to build on this is not addressed by a straight zoning to MF-18. And I'll discuss some of the details of that on the next slide. It also addresses some of the village center overlay and connectivity components. The image that you see on the screen in the far right is a proposed conceptual of what they would like to build. If the zoning case is approved today, staff would administratively approve the site plan and make sure that it's in conformance with the zoning. And then on the right is a couple sketches of product types that they could build on this site, stacked flats, the single-family detached rental-style product, et cetera. So I'll highlight a few of the stipulations and requirements of the PAD overlay. I'll be brief, but if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. So starting with the design standards, typically the MF-18 district is intended for two- and three-story apartment buildings or townhouse-style units, and the designs guidelines are written as such. Since two principal products are being proposed on this site, one looking and feeling like an MF-12 or those single-family rentals and some looking like a traditional garden or stacked flat or townhouse style, the design guidelines address that. So if a product looks like an MF-12 or MF-12 and acts like an MF-12, we'll treat it like an MF-12. The interior of the site, if the property is ever divided into two different multifamily communities, it clarifies that that interior line will be considered an exterior or an interior line for the purposes of this zoning. As you'll recall, MF-12 buildings require 15-foot separations around the perimeter. So the intent of that is really that from the street. There's some street character and they're more separated. So that would not apply to that interior. Also, if the community is divided into two communities or more, they would need to provide equal amounts of amenities to both parts of the community. So you'd have to provide a pool on both communities or the residents of those communities would need to have access to those types of amenities. Parking in this development is proposed to be through a mix of types of parking. So you might have tandem parking, you might have garage parking, you might have surface parking. So this PAD overlay addresses that, that if they choose to do tandem, for example, they'll come to the city with a parking plan that we would need to approve so that we make sure that the same units using the same parking spaces and they're not going to use all the guest parking spaces, things of that nature. Patios and walls. So ground floor patios may encroach into the landscape setback if they are connected to the sidewalk via paths. This is to create street presence of those buildings. The buildings would also need to face the street if they are to do that. So the fencing would need to be view fencing if they were to encroach in the landscape setback. They may encroach by up to 10 feet, which still means there'd be 20 feet of landscaping outside the fence, then a view fence, an additional 10 feet of landscaping on the inside of the fence, and then the unit facing out towards the street. So for example, if you're driving down Astraia Parkway and that is the condition, you would see view fencing in all those units that typically face to the rear in the backyards of the street would have to face out towards the street and have pedestrian connections. So there's some street character there and it meets the village center intent. You might have questions about what does that mean for how far buildings are away from Astraia Parkway? To illustrate an example of that, right now, the housing units in Astraia Vista are approximately 30 feet from the curb of Astraia Parkway. If you count the landscaping in the Astraia Parkway right-of-way and the landscape requirements of this development, you're still talking units about 65 to 70 feet away from the curb of Astraia Parkway. So the impact of these units are further away from Astraia Parkway than the existing homes in Astraia Vista. And on the north side, if the patios are to encroach, they shall create portal-like entrances so those groups of buildings will then have a pedestrian connection to the roadway if they are to encroach. The developer also codified minimum amenities for the property, such as a resort-style pool, structured shaded seating elements and turf areas. And the PAD overlay also requires six pedestrian connections to Yuma Road, seven pedestrian connections to Astraia Parkway, three pedestrian connections to Goodyear Boulevard South, and four pedestrian connections to Goodyear Boulevard West. There are various other provisions that are described in this PAD overlay document to talk about general pedestrian connectivity as well. And the developer will also build a Ballpark Village monument and artwork at the southwest corner of Astraia Parkway in Yuma, and the art will be encouraged to be themed water, which was the original city center theme. Everyone asks, when we talk about converting multifamily to commercial, what does that look like for a commercial in the area? I will highlight two projects that are entitled for multi or for commercial. One is the Ballpark Village Core, which the city maintains or owns. There are approximately 53 acres of commercial within that area entitled for commercial. That could yield as much as 200,000 to 383,000 square feet of commercial. There's also Ballpark Village North. Right now, their intent is to provide about 53,000 square feet of commercial and retail space. That does not account Seraphina Shops or Hudson Commons Retail. For comparison, Westgate has about 13 acres and Tanger has about 37 acres or Scottsdale Quarter has about 28 acres. So we're talking 60 acres of commercial within the Ballpark Village area, which could yield, if you count all the sites, approximately 200,000 square feet of commercial. And for developers listening, Act Dev is always happy to help you find a space. So prior to the P&amp;Z meeting, the city had not received any formal resident opposition. However, at the neighborhood meeting, residents generally voiced their concerns for drive-through restaurants in the area, a lack of walkable retail, and a desire for more sit-down restaurants and retail options. They have also stated that they want more walkable public pedestrian connections and fewer walled-off developments to be the focus of this area of Goodyear. Additionally, some residents voiced their support for lower-density residential product at this location as a transition from the Astraia Vista to the southwest as you go to the northeast to Centerra, Ballpark Village North. At the P&amp;Z meeting, two residents spoke in regards to this project. One generally spoke about the adjacencies to Astraia Vista development, how the development interfaces with it. Another expressed observations regarding development south of the freeway versus north of the freeway and frustrations with the impacts of the city hall being moved north of the freeway and what that means for sit-down restaurants in this area. Staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed zoning to the greater community, and with no major concerns being found, staff is recommending you approve the rezoning of this property from planned area development to with an underlying zoning of MF-18 with a PAD overlay titled Velux at Ballpark Village, as set forth in the documents before you. As a note, the applicant will be making improvements to Yuma Road to add an eastbound travel lane that would make a total of three eastbound travel lanes. Astraia Parkway will add an additional southbound lane for a total of three southbound lanes. They will be relocating a signal at the corner of Astraia and Yuma. They will be relocating the span wire signal at the intersection of Goodyear Boulevard West and Yuma Road. They will pay 25% end loop payments for a signal at Goodyear Boulevard West and Yuma Road. And those are the major infrastructure improvements that they will be doing in the area, as well as improving Goodyear Boulevard West and Goodyear Boulevard South to a major arterial or major collector, which is two lanes in each direction. Today, that is two lanes for both directions. It'll eventually have two lanes in each direction with a raised median. The applicant is here, they do not have a presentation, and I'm happy to take any zoning-related questions.
Would the applicant, advocate like to speak at this time?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street, Phoenix. If Christian doesn't bring it up, it's not worth saying. So I have nothing to say except hello and congratulations on your new building. I follow your instructions, mayor.
You're perfect. Thank you. All right. Are there any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Oh, we got somebody? Come on up.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As a homeowner in the area, we are concerned, my name is Teresa Cross, no, sorry. We are concerned that the estimate of traffic is under the what we would consider appropriate. Also, the amount of residents who will go to school in the area. As a teacher myself, I know that .3 people per residence is probably not accurate. You're looking at probably more like one per residential area, you know, facility. And so I'm wondering what that's going to do to the increased population that's going to be traveling through the neighborhood to get to the two schools. And so that's a concern that we had that had not been addressed in either of the two prior meetings. And so I just wanted to bring that concern here and make sure I voiced that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to address that?
I'm happy to do so. Thank you, mayor.
Go ahead. Hit the, I think you got the red button there. Is it good? He's on?
It's on.
Okay.
Do I need to punch something?
No, you're good. Go ahead.
Good, thank you. I thought you were cutting me off already.
No.
Two quick things. We're reducing the density to one-fourth of what it was before, so the traffic will be drastically reduced. That's our first concern. Second concern are the schools, and of course, the staff has contacted the schools and they had no comment on the project. So I think we've addressed both those comments, mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. City clerk, please read resolution number 2022-2267, title only.
Adopt resolution number 2022-2267 declaring as public records those certain documents referred to and incorporated by reference in ordinance 2022-1556 filed with the city clerk related to the rezoning case for Velux at Ballpark Village.
Thank you. Will the city council please enter a motion in a second to adopt the resolution ordinance number 2022-2267? I see a motion in a second. We got the, okay, councilmember Stip, you're up.
Yeah, I need a bigger red light, I guess. See, Paul, we're all trying to figure out this technology, right?
Makes you feel better.
So did, we didn't quite answer the traffic question. Did we have a traffic study done within relationship to this project or had one been done prior when the previous zoning was in place?
Traffic was evaluated and they will be providing improvements to the roads. The traffic that will be generated on this site is projected to be substantially less because previous to this zoning, if this zoning is approved, there were 2,400, approximately 2,000 to 2,400 residential units that could have been built on here, plus the commercial that I mentioned. And now we're reducing the commercial and now, based on what they're showing, it's less than 600 residential units. So one-fourth of the residential units are projected. A city center arterial road would have had two or three lanes in each direction. This is still building a major collector roadway, so that's two lanes median in each direction. So those will be looked at as well.
And at what point in this project is that looked at?
It's preliminarily looked at at the zoning level, and then when they come back in for the site plan, it is reevaluated as well to see if they're going to trigger any additional off-site signals that weren't contemplated with this case.
Okay, so for, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I did not hear your name or I would address you by your name, but thank you. So we will continue to evaluate the traffic issues on this particular site to make sure that we're in compliance with our own rules, kind of moving forward. Regarding the schools, like, you know, I think we, one of the things that happens that nobody really knows about is we have, we contact the school, let them know what's coming, give them an opportunity to weigh in. They're the ones who are either taking the children or not. We don't get any comment back from them. We can't, we can't impose our own will on the school when they don't object to it themselves. So, Christian, I appreciate your presentation, Mr. Gilbert. Thank you for your time. That ends my questions.
Vice mayor?
I need a big red light as well. Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. And so, yeah, and so I'll clarify the streets that you mentioned as well. You said Goodyear Boulevard will be widened as well?
Yes.
All the way up to Van Buren?
Yuma.
Yuma, I mean.
Yuma down to Astraia Parkway, two lanes in each direction with a raised median.
Okay, and then we're widening?
Astraia Parkway between Goodyear Boulevard, sorry, Astraia Parkway between Yuma on the north, Goodyear Boulevard South on the south, and then Yuma Road between Goodyear Boulevard West and Astraia Parkway. So this whole section here will have its roadways built out to their ultimate conditions.
Okay. And then, I'm sure there's a study and I'm sure you've done this already, but the parking that's in this location here, I'm sure it meets the standards that we're, that we're talking about. I've been talking to some residents that have just moved into new apartments in the area, and they say how tight and how limited the parking is. So I don't know if that's something we should talk about offline and just apartments in general. I just want to make sure that's good, especially since I think the Mavericks had that huge event and the traffic was pretty, pretty large in that general area. So I'm just curious how it's going to affect the whole area there. And then I think I saw on this, this product here, which I appreciate, it looks like, it looks like there's going to be garages in a lot of these, or at least in the, the non-garden style section of the, of the parking or of the apartment complexes?
Yes, their intent, based on their current submittal, is that a one-third or so of those units on the front, they're introducing a new product line where the residential apartment buildings, the single-story ones, would have a garage attached in, a little driveway.
Yeah, no, that's great, because I know that we've been starting to see those recently, and I think that's really appreciated. And covered parking and things like that. Do you know if the, the garden style will have covered, covered style parking or if that's an off-the-stipulation or not?
Per our requirements, you need one covered space per unit. That can come in the form of a garage or a carport.
Okay. And then, I appreciate you addressing the commercial as well, since we're, since it was originally zoned for commercial, but commercial in the whole area. And this is really a question, might be a work session question as well. So I don't, does, does the applicant have a plan for, I'm just thinking in general or higher, higher level really, with, with the amount of apartments we're having in the area around maintenance, maintenance of those. So in 10, 30, 40 years from now, do you have a fund or something that you put into or is that something maybe on the city side that we look into to maintain the high quality? Because we want it to look great for, forever. And I had a, I just like making sure that would, I don't know how to sustain, sustain the great quality of your product when you actually build it for the, for a longer, longer term than 10, 20 years from now. And I don't, maybe that's just a work session question as a city we need to talk about or if that's something that they already have a plan for and I just didn't see it in the, in the narrative.
Code enforcement is really our means to do so. And when we write into the PAD overlay, it's like you will provide a resort-style pool. Those are things we can hold them to. So if you go to some older apartments, you know, further into the valley where they've let their pools go bad and things like that, they would be in a zoning violation by doing that. So we have our code enforcement team to help us with that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking long-term for the area. I want Goodyear to always be seen as a high-quality, best place to live and work and play and all that. So I'm just trying to think out loud of ways to maintain that quality, because I, because I think we need lots of different housing options. I just want to make sure the quality will continue to be there. So, yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you, Teresa, for coming and voicing your concern as well. And, yeah, looking forward to it. So I'll be, I'll be approving it. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Are the garages single-story or double?
They're, the garages? The garages would be single-story.
Well, I'm sorry, single-car or double-car?
Their current proposal is single-car, but we don't regulate whether they're single or double-car.
Okay, because if they're husband-wife both working, both have a car, one will have to be in the garage, one on the driveway.
That's correct.
So, and a lot of the complaints that I've been getting is the street parking where people have guests over and then they block someone else's driveway. And I know I'm not, I guess I, I need to be convinced that there's going to be a garage for every unit, but that doesn't necessarily take care of any visitors. I hope there'll be ample visitor parking somewhere in this, in this design, but I don't see it in the, the setback picture that you have for us.
So they have not requested any deviations to our parking standard. The one additional thing they will need to do over another type of multifamily is that because they're proposing that garage with the driveway, they're going to have to go through an additional step administratively where we're reviewing and approving a parking plan. So for example, one of our requirements might be that you need to label all the parking spaces in there so that when you have the husband and wife and one's parked in the driveway and one's in the garage, that one extra person's not going to go use up a visitor spot. So we're going to make them have a plan where they have to address patrols and things of that nature so that they're ensuring that that visitor parking space is left open. And our typical ratio for guest parking is one space per, one space per 10 units.
One space per 10 units?
Yes. So as a, as a pot of guest parking, there you end up having a lot of guest parking.
Okay. So I'm assuming then they won't be renting to three adults or more?
They would have to manage how they rent and how many cars are on a, on a site based on that.
That'll be an issue right there. Also, my last comment is I appreciate the design standard and the picture of what it may look like, but I really hope it does not look like this when it's finished, because I don't think it's going to bring anything, I don't think it's going to enhance the ballpark area if, if they do look like these with the browns and the dirt color. And we want, when we approve these, it's so long until they're built, we forget what they say they're going to look like. And then when they're built, we're so disappointed because they're not up to the standard we would like to see. So I hope that your team will continue to monitor that and give suggestions, please.
I really appreciate that comment. These are the types of comments that really help us when we work with the applicant. We've conveyed that to the applicant and they've been looking forward to working with us on making these a little bit more modern to fit the ballpark area.
Yeah, because we, we still would like to see the stonework and the ironwork and not just a plain apartment with one gray, one brown, one white. That, that's not very, that's not really very pretty.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate that comment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lorotano?
I just have a quick question on the, the traffic. You said there was going to be a light on Yuma and Goodyear Boulevard, right?
Goodyear Boulevard West and Yuma, yes. That's correct.
Okay. Will that go in when the project goes in or will you wait, will they wait till so much gets built? What's the phasing in for that?
There currently is a signal there. It's just a span wire signal, so it is a temporary signal. They will be responsible for moving that pole when they come in to improve the rest of Goodyear Boulevard West. They will also need to pay their 25% into a permanent modular signal, the boxy Goodyear signal. They'll need to pay in towards that. And then our traffic team is already working with them on, you know, timing and how we can potentially fit some of that into CIP-type work.
Okay, and just when we do the timing, make sure if there are going to be students there to get to the schools, because the schools are all on the other side of Astraia, so that's a pretty busy street. So I don't know what's the best way to do that, but if we could work with traffic to make sure that the people from that side can easily get over to the schools, because there hasn't been that much development, it's just starting on that side. We don't want kids trying to run across that street.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. It's a good development. I think it's a good project. I agree with councilmember Campbell. We don't want to see, when it comes forward, brown, brown, and brown, and gray, gray, and grayest. So you, you got it. You've heard that from us. So I think it's a good project. It's got very- So you, you got it. You've heard that from us. So I think it's a good project. It's got very variation, so I think it'll fit in really good there. So thank you.
Councilmember Cano?
Things I like about this project is that it's not all single-family rentals, so I appreciate the diversity. And looking at the conceptual layout, it's laid out like neighborhoods, and so I think it's conducive to fit in the neighborhood. I live by two, one new and one older apartment complexes. People do not come and go at all at the same time. And so that, it doesn't necessarily mean everybody's going to be on, jumping on the road at the same time. My comment echoes Councilmember Campbell's, is about the appearance. This is a really prominent corner, and I think that it's going to be important that it does have some architectural interest. And, and what we've seen in the conceptual is, looks like things that we've already have all over. It's, it's overdone. These apartments that, these garden apartments that have these little caps on the top, I think we have plenty of those. And so hoping to see something that will really be a statement, will really indicate that this is an entryway for this ballpark village and look remarkable.
You know, the only thing I would like to add is, again, it sounds like a broken record, but I believe with Cano, and also with Campbell, and Lortano, I, I think, you know, when we actually come to the design, you know, grays, browns, et cetera, you'll dress that up a little bit. Like to say we're in the forever business, so whatever you build is going to be there forever, so we want to make sure it's up to the standards as far as a little diverse on some of the palettes, some of the outside pieces, maybe even something on the windows to kind of dress it up a little bit. Okay? So it was great discussion with everybody here. Oh, Vice Mayor's got something he wants to add?
I just had a quick question. Is there any monument signs? Because this is the entrance to the Ballpark Village theming. Is there any theming aspect to the corner, hard corner of Estrella? We were talking about how a prominent of a corner this might be in the future. Is there anything that, that has, that is that, or has alignment of that?
Yes, so the Fulton Home zoning case will be building a monument that matches the one that will be here. They will have art installed in theirs. The Ballpark Village North site will have art in theirs. Bullard and Yuma will have one. So when you come into the ballpark from the I-10 in Bullard and you get to Yuma, you've entered the area. When you get to Estrella and Yuma, you've entered the area. The three corners that are privately owned will have art. The only one that will not, will, at this time, will be the cities.
Ours. Okay, no, thank you. Just wanted to understand what that would look like. Thank you.
All right, with that being no further discussion, will City Clerk please open the voting?
The votes have been entered.
All in? Well, thank you very much. Motion carriers, unanimously, majority vote, seven-zero. All right, with that, let's see, a motion carrier. Will the City Clerk please read ordinance number 2022-1556 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2022-1556, conditionally rezoning approximately 51.24 acres of property located at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Yuma Road to be known as V-Lock at Ballpark Village. Mending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for penalties, and directing the City Clerk to record a copy of the attached ordinance.
Counsel, please enter a motion, a second, to adopt ordinance 2022-1556. See, both a motion and a second. Any requests to speak? Have you opened that up? I guess we've already entered everything, talked everything through the last. Be no further discussion. Will the Police Clerk please open the voting?
The votes have all been entered.
Thank you. Motion carries, unanimously, seven-zero. Thank you. Next public hiring item to consider is the termination, a Second Amendment, and restate rezoning, let's say, development agreement for the Las Palmas and rezoning approximately 273.71 acres located at the southwest corner of Citrus and Roosevelt Street, Las Palmas. Open a public discussion. You're back again, Christian.
How's it going? I'm here before you this evening with a request from the applicant Howard Weinstein to conduct a rezoning on 273 acres of property within the city. So the overall property we'll be discussing today is in Central Goodyear within the area we call West Goodyear. It is on the southwest corner of Citrus Road and Van Buren Street. That is halfway between McDowell on the north and Van Buren on the south. The property is within the general planned land use category of neighborhood, and the property is currently zoned Las Palmas final planned area development with an underlying land use of residential and water campus, with a cap of 750 homes for the entire property. The overall property is located in this area of the map in red, right there, the top northwest corner of this map. So zooming in a little closer so you can see what's here today. It is south of Roosevelt Street and a large, large lot county development. It is west of Citrus Road and the Innovation Center, which will contain business park and retail uses at this particular location on the western part of that property. It is east of Large Lot County Residential along Perryville Road, and it is north of Fun Lookin County Properties, south of Van Buren Street. As a note, this does not fall within the Luke Air Force Accident Potential Zone or the 65 DNL. However, the property does fall within the Luke Air Force Base Military Vicinity Boundary and is adjacent to the graduated densities. So the graduated densities noise contours. As a note, this property will be proposed to be capped still at 750 homes. And additional public disclosures will be required as a condition of the zoning. For a brief zoning history, the property was zoned Las Palmas Final PAD in 2005 and called for again a maximum of 750 homes. Today, they are propos, and that property proposed eight different lot sizes, from court homes at the, on the small side, to on the southeast corner of the property, up to 115-foot wide lots by 175-foot deep lots. I've not heard of that since probably I was in high school. And today, the applicant seeks a master plan with four zoning districts, and I will detail that proposal on the next slide. All right, the applicant seeks to replace the PAD that's existing with Las Palmas zoning case today. The narrative does state that Lennar Homes is the builder, but Lennar does not currently plan on building homes on this property. This zoning case is bringing, being brought forth by the applicant to zone the property, so that when a home builder is ready to come forth, they may do so, or multiple home builders. The development proposes 137 acres of R1-4 with R1-4 reduced standards, 91 acres of R1-6 with R1-6 reduced standards, 38 acres of C2 with some modifications, and approximately 7.11 acres of property zone public facility district up in the northwest corner of the site. Collectively, to be called Las Palmas at West Goodyear. Again, I'll say it again, the maximum number of homes will remain at 750, which is what's stipulated under the existing zoning. And the PAD overlay addresses certain modifications and codifies minimum level of residential amenities, connectivity and streetscape elements required to create a cohesive master plan community, as well as buffering considerations for those residents in the county on the west. To highlight a few of the modifications, all R1-4 lots within the development shall have a minimum width of 40 feet, a minimum depth of 95 feet, and a minimum square footage of 4275 square feet. They'll have a minimum rear yard setback of 15 feet, and 30% of the lots will have 45, be 45-foot in width. 50% of the lots shall be at least 115 feet deep, and shall have a minimum rear yard setback of 20 feet. The usable covered patios for these will be 100 square feet covered with a minimum dimension of eight feet. And the covered portion may extend into the rear setback by five feet. So effectively, there are two sizes of R1-4 lots that will be provided to create lot diversity. All R1-6 lots within the development shall be a minimum of 55 foot wide, and the same rules for patios apply. Homes within this development are also permitted two kitchens in the event the builder would like to construct quote-unquote "a home within a home" or a mother-in-law suite. There are strict provisions on this use, such as they must be attached to the main unit and have connected access to the main unit. They shall not be metered separately. They shall not have separate driveways or fenced yards. The C2 commercial parcel will be limited in height to 30 feet, which currently they're, you know, allowed 56 feet, so they're dropping the height there. They are not allowed to have the following uses: adult-oriented establishments, bus terminals, pawn shops, hotels and motels. But they are allowed brew pubs and storage buildings. If storage buildings are allowed, they have to be on the north side of the site. They cannot occupy more than 20% of the site, and there are strict provisions such as no garage door showing, no seeing the inside contents of the storage. Everything needs to be internalized. And if at the time the commercial site is developed and there are still residential parcels west of the site, they must construct an 80-foot landscape buffer on the west side to buffer those residents in the county from the commercial developments. That's a couple of highlights of the PAD. To highlight a couple of the amenities, there will be a nine-acre centralized park, and that will be located in the heart of the community. It will be supported by usable active open space. There will be a pool area, parking, showers for the pool area. The pool deck will have lounge chairs and a restroom building. There'll be a dining pavilion, athletic courts and fields, game areas, trail connections, walkways and benches. The development will also have four pocket parks throughout the neighborhood, which will each include a tot lot, shaded pavilion, park, tables, barbecue benches, seat areas, lounge chairs and walkways. The development will also construct a trail along the RID Canal, which will remain unfenced and available for the general public to use. So if you're over in Silva Trails and you want to walk the Citrus Road horse trail and cross over and use this trail, everybody's welcome to use that. Or people up north want to put their horses on this, they can giddy up and do on that, too. The trail will connect to Citrus Road on the west and Van Buren Street on the south. On the left, you'll see an example of that central amenity. In the middle, you'll see an example of what a DG trail looks like. And on the west, on the right, you'll see a conceptual of what a pocket park looks like. Few highlights of connectivity, and you can see the overall development on the left side. This infill of the development will also include an eight-foot-wide DG trail that will run along the western portion of the property between the residents in the county and the water campus, between the commercial and this development. That will also remain ungated and unopen. So what really ends up occurring is you have a nice open trail from Roosevelt on the northwest of our city that's going to connect down towards RID, which will eventually connect in with La Privada, such, so forth and so on. So you end up getting a nice connection through all the private developer contributions. We talked about lot diversity a little bit earlier, but additional elements is if, for the R1-4 area, the blocks will not exceed 660 feet in distance. And similar streetscape elements will be in this development, such as the West Goodyear theming. So they'll have picket fencing and fence-type materials at the entrance of the development. They'll be calling themselves Las Palmas at West Goodyear, and they will have trees 20 foot off, 25 feet off-center along Citrus Road. Citrus Road ends up being a very nice shaded promenade when you're, you know, driving through that in the future. The other amenity, or other streetscape elements will be codified when we get to the preliminary plat. So to date, the city has not received any formal resident opposition from this case, only general calls and inquiries. At the neighborhood meeting, residents largely had questions concerning flooding in the rural county area. And staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed zoning with the greater community. With no major concerns being found, staff recommends you approve the recommendation to rezone the property from final planned area development to the four districts listed above, with the PAD overlay subject to the staff report stipulations, including the termination of the existing Las Palmas DA. Of note, that this developer will be building half-street improvements on the north side of Van Buren Road, or Van Buren Street. That's two lanes westbound in each direction. That will occur from their western property line to the RID. They will be building the south half of Roosevelt's, which will be a minor collector, so that's one lane with a turn lane in the middle. That will be from the western edge of their property over to Citrus Road. They will be paying for 25% of a future signal that could be installed at Roosevelt and Citrus. And they will pay to construct signals on Van Buren Street at their associated entrance, if that entrance ends up warranting a signal. The applicant is, and they'll also be doing their half-street improvements on Citrus Road, so two lanes southbound from Roosevelt Street to RID. There is no applicant here, but I'm happy to answer any zoning questions you may have today.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Go ahead and close the public hearing. The City Clerk, please read resolution number 2022-2268 by title only.
Adopt resolution number 2022-2268, terminating second amended and restated development agreement for Las Palmas and declaring as public records the certain documents incorporated by reference in ordinance 2022-1557 filed with the City Clerk related to the rezoning case for Las Palmas at West Goodyear.
Counsel, please enter a motion and a second to adopt the resolution 2022-2267. Seeing both a motion and a second, open for council discussion. Councilmember Lortano?
I just had a question about the two kitchen. Have we done that before? Is this like strictly for a casita-type thing, or what's up?
Typically, no. That would not be permitted unless there's like HOA-type things that we've agreed to, but typically, no. In order to get two kitchens, you would need to rezone a property to allow that type of product.
Okay, my concern is, we don't want to set this up to be like an Airbnb like niche in the community where everything is Airbnb'd or V-BO'd, because I think that was probably some of the other cities we're having, when they were adding like two kitchens. So do we have anything built in there to prevent that, or how do we prevent that?
The way it's prevented is there are a lot of stipulations related to how the space is used, but a big one is it can't be metered separately. It needs to be connected to the unit and no separate parking spaces. So if they were to rent it as an Airbnb, for example, you'd have the normal people that live there and a driveway, and they'd be, they'd be competing for driveway space, garage space, things of that nature. And so it has to be attached to the actual structure, so you're not going to have a renter that's out in some casita that's detached in the yard. Has to be a part of the main house and have a connection to the main house.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Campbell?
Christian, are the lots going to be large enough to have motorhome garages attached to the homes?
If they are very creative in their design, they would be able to. But when you're talking about R1-4-style lots, that some of them are going to be 40-foot wide, you think of a house now being 30 feet, 20 of that's garage. I would think very unlikely unless you get very creative with how you're building that RV garage.
Because that seems to be a need. Folks that are buying homes want a motorhome garage rather than having to store it off-site for many reasons. And I still want us to have conversations for that if we have builders that come and want to do that. Also, it's really important that we get multi-generational homes built in Goodyear. Because we have a lot of folks who's, are moving their parents in with them, or a mother or a father or something, and they want a little separate quarters, but they don't want it necessarily in just a standard three or four-bedroom home. So I want to be sure that we are at least having that conversation so that it's, it is acceptable.
And that's what this zoning intends to provide a product for, when you're having that home within a home, the two kitchens, but it's connected, so then you could have a multi-generational family, whether that's, you know, the, you know, parent coming back.
I've seen some of them out in Vistancia in their gorgeous, and they really are pretty. There's no reason why we don't have them out here. We just need a builder to come out and build them. And also, is this whole area of Las Palmas, West Goodyear, it's going to be located within the city limits? It's not going to be any county island?
No, this entire project is being rezoned within the city and will remain within the city.
Okay, good, thank you.
Welcome.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I do appreciate the connectivity with the, with the surrounding neighborhood, the horse trails and things like that. I see people riding horses around that area pretty frequently, so I think that's great to be able to incorporate that into the community. I had a question on one of your renderings. Is this the gated community?
Their current intent is that it could be a gated community. The one, the rendering you're seeing here is gated, so if that builder came back, they would have an opportunity to make that gated.
Yeah, that kind of half, that circle drive entrance looks like a gated, okay. And then, I guess somewhat to Councilwoman Campbell's question, is, are the houses that are actually on Perryville, is that sliver of houses, county?
That's sliverous county with the exception of 15 feet of those people's front yards.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just curious. It would be interesting, yeah, because I know we have the commercial right here on the corner, but it's not the true corner of the, of that intersection there. So that'll be, be interesting what, what wants to be there. And, no, and just a side note, I think it's refreshing to see single-family homes come to us as well. So I appreciate that as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion. Thorough as always, Christian, and good job. With that, no further discussion. Seen on, will the City Clerk open the voting?
All the votes have been entered.
Thank you. The motion cancel, uh, cancel, uh, being passed by majority vote. All right, will the City Clerk plead reordnis by, by number 2022-1557 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2022-1557, conditionally rezoning approximately 273.71 gross acres of property located at the of property located at the southwest corner of Citrus Road and Roosevelt Street to be known as Las Palmas at West Goodyear, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for penalties, and directing the city clerk to record a copy of the ordinance.
City council, please enter a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number 2022-1557. Seeing a motion in a second, open for council discussion. Seeing no discussion, request to speak button, please. None. Clerk, open voting.
All the votes have been entered.
Thank you. Motion count, uh, covers seven zero. Yay. All right, business now. We've got one would, I would like to remind council to wait for a motion in a second before discussion. Next item on business is consider approving a one-year Avondale-Goodyear microtransit services cooperative agreement with First Transit, Inc. Please introduce yourself for the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kristi McMurty, project management coordinator for the engineering department. I'm here tonight to request your approval on a one-year contract with First Transit to operate our pilot microtransit service in the Goodyear microtransit zone. On the left is a mock-up of our service vehicle. In addition to having many years of transit operating experience, First Transit is providing a project manager who lives right here in the Southwest Valley. He's very familiar with the cities of Goodyear and Avondale and has been working hand-in-hand with us the last couple of weeks to get the service pulled together. We'll be running three vans through our zone with a spare on hand for peak use periods. Two of the three vehicles will be wheelchair-equipped, and all of the vehicles will have bike racks. The colors we chose represent Goodyear in gold and Avondale in purple. The website is still in development, so don't visit it yet. Our zone map is on the right. It will be updated soon that we can move the library to its new location and better define our boundaries. The key to this service is that all trips must occur within the zone. There are a few exceptions that we've identified recently. We will serve the Avondale Resource Center, and we will also serve the DeVita Kidney Dialysis Center. Both locations are just outside the zone. If you live outside the zone, you can still travel in it. You just have to download the We Ride app. To ensure service efficiency, we're using a virtual stop system. It's very much like a bus stop. We will ask our riders to make a short walk, usually no further than about 500 feet, so that the vehicle can get in and around Goodyear in as few maneuvers as necessary. For folks in our larger neighborhoods, some you saw tonight, most virtual stops will be located at the community mailboxes. For our multifamily communities, we'll probably locate those stops at the leasing office, and that gives everybody a pretty decent and fair amount of distance to walk. We also created a joint zone along McDowell Road between Litchfield and Dice Art Roads to allow Avondale residents easy access to the Abrazo Medical Campus and also to shop at our Target at Litchfield and McDowell Road. The base fare for our service is $2 per trip. However, we've identified some discounts that we're going to offer seniors over the age of 60, veterans, and disabled passengers will all pay a dollar. In addition, we're going to offer that same discount to students currently attending Australia Mountain Community College and Franklin Pierce University. We're working also on a discount for any residents that are, or anybody that actually is transferring to or from the Valley Metro bus system. The company that is building the app is working on an enhancement that will allow us to program the special groups into the service so that people can provide that proof online. But until that enhancement is available, we're going to ask passengers to show proof of their status to the driver as they board the vehicle, with the exception of wheelchair passengers. And for folks that don't want to use a credit card, we will accept cash onboard. It will need to be exact. The operators are not authorized to provide change. For folks, I'm sorry, during our marketing outreach, we're going to be going into thorough detail about the app and how the website works. Just this past week, I had a really great meeting with Corinne Holiday. I am very excited to work with our digital communications department. These are some marketing examples from other microtransit services. We are going to create a how-to ride video. We're also going to create some social media teasers leading up to the grand opening or the launch. I'm also coordinating in-person presentations through our neighborhood services and community engagement team. I mentioned the dedicated website earlier. We'll have links to that website on our website. Folks can also use, can also book their ride and pay for it on their home computer if that's easier for them than using a cell phone. We are strongly encouraging rider feedback. Since this is a pilot project, we have several performance metrics. I'm only going to give you a couple tonight, but these are going to be key for us to be able to recommend whether we continue the service and whatever we, however we go forward. For instance, average onboard time, we're looking for 20 minutes or less. On-time performance, at least 90%. And percent of users with failed searches due to high demand, we're looking for less than 5%. So between the contractor and the technology that's being provided to operate the service, those are the kinds of metrics we're going to be looking for. Phoenix Public Transit has advised us that they expect the Federal Transit Administration funding agreements to come in late November, early December. So I will be back to request your authorization on those IGAs. Our vehicles are ordered, and as soon as they're delivered, they will be wrapped and we will begin to train the operators. We already have our dispatcher and safety supervisor onboard. The app is in development, so we will use screenshots, a lot like these, that I showed you earlier, to be able to train folks on how to use the app. The rest of my time is going to be getting out to businesses, neighborhood HOAs, hotels, social services, everywhere we have potential users to spread the word about the service. Marketing is key to our success. We have soft launches scheduled for late October and the first week of November. This will give us an opportunity to test the app, take some employees around, maybe from their houses to work, just kind of test the service, make sure that we iron out all the wrinkles before we're ready to launch, which we are expecting to do November 14th. If there's any changes in that data, I will advise that through the city manager's memo. All trips in November, however, when we do launch, will be free. We will have two holidays that month that will occur that the service will not be available, so we want to make sure that we have the best opportunity to continue people being interested in the service. And we will resume the fares in December. And before I open up to questions, I just want to express some gratitude to Jackie Barron's in the finance department, Wendy Corsi and Jay Karlovich in legal. This was a very unique arrangement, this contract, and they worked together to get me here tonight. So I'm really very grateful for their cooperation, support and extraordinary skill. I also want to have Jacob, who is our project manager. Way from the back? And Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, and I appreciate the shout, shout out to staff that that's helped, because I truly believe that's, that's what makes a city run. So with that being said, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, with the council, please enter a motion in a, let's see, what do I got? Please enter a motion in a second to approve one-year Avondale-Goodyear microtransit services cooperative agreement, contract number C-23-0046 with First Transit, Inc., authorizing expenditures of funds up to $1 million, and approve all necessary fiscal year 2023 budget amendments to implement a microtransit pilot program in Goodyear. I see both a motion and a second. Let's see, request to speak, they're already coming in. So with that, we will start with the councilmember Stip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christine, obviously, we have been working very closely through the Valley Metro process and whatnot. We are, we are not the only ones doing this, and I think I want to kind of share that information with the council. So who else in the West Valley, and then we'll talk about the, we're the tip of the spear on this, but we've got other communities that are doing the same thing. Can you respond on that a little bit?
Absolutely, Mayor. Councilmember Stip, thank you for the question. As a matter of fact, as recently as this morning, the city of surprise actually had a meeting with the providers that we are using to see if they can use the service in their area. They have identified a zone that they're very interested in, and if they do decide to move forward, it'll be in January. Our friends in the East Valley are currently operating a new service called Chandler Flex. That's associated with a grant from the state of Arizona, and it's intended specifically to provide transportation for students, but they have broadened their scope a little bit so that they are taking the public as well. Their service is off to an incredible start. And then we are also aware, last week, the city of Scottsdale reached out to my counterpart in Avondale to get some information about launching the service there. But, oh, and I probably shouldn't, Darcy will never forgive me if I don't mention our friends in Tolleson, who also are launching a service using Uber and Lyft. That's actually going to be a really interesting project because they're going 24 hours so that they can provide service to employees that work in a lot of the warehouses in their area. So we're going to keep an eye on that one. We're very interested in the data that we get back because we know we have the similar situation here in Goodyear, where we would really like to be able to help out some of our businesses.
So what we're finding, I think, through this is that the face of public transportation is changing entirely. We are experiencing that on the Valley Metro Board. We're experiencing that, obviously, with the uncertainty of the Prop 400 extension. And these types of services are funded locally. They're not funded with regional funds, so they're not tied together with that. But I'm going to celebrate the fact that we are the first, finally, and not the, we're not the tail, we're finally the nose of the dog here. So Christine, I know you and Marshall have done a tremendous amount of work, and I just want to thank you and everybody for bringing this finally to conclusion. This is going to be an exciting moment for us as a city.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Christine, I appreciate it. And I like the tip of the spear, not the wet-nose dog analogy, but, no, I appreciate it. So, but the, so how does Avondale, I know there's two locations that we're going to be using in Avondale. How's Avondale, do they also have their own zone that they can expand to?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you, yeah, thank you very much for the question. Avondale does have a zone. It's actually north of the freeway. We actually have that, the reason that we created this, this shared zone along McDowell between Dice Art and Litchfield is because their zone actually does kind of touch the roof, I guess you could say, the Goodyear zone. We're actually going to be using the Goodyear Park and Ride as a layover for the drivers in the vehicles, so that if we have to swap vehicles, like we have a peak maybe in Goodyear or a peak in Avondale, and we need an additional vehicle, rather than put that onus on the customer to have to wait longer for their ride, we might be able to take a vehicle from one zone, share it with the other. And to have all the vehicles at the Goodyear Park and Ride makes that a very tangible and easy process in order to be able to shift the service.
Okay. And then, I think I thought the first slide you had, it's 800, about 800,000 for the one year, just on our part.
That's correct. And half of that is Federal Transit Administration funds, the other half is not general fund, is actually coming from our advertising at the Goodyear Park and Ride. The digital marquee that's posted there, those funds can only be used for transit. We've kind of been stockpiling them a little bit over the last couple of years, so there's sufficient funds there to help us make the difference on the Federal Transit Administration funding, which is pretty important when you're doing a pilot project.
Okay. And then I'm sure Avondale has somewhat similar costs.
They have the exact same arrangement.
That they're doing. And then we'll, we're sharing the same three vehicles between both cities.
Thank you for the question. Avondale will have three vehicles with a spare in their zone, and we will have three vehicles with a spare in our zone. Our zone is slightly bigger, but we also have the Goodyear Airport, which kind of skews the space a little bit. We're actually a lot closer in terms of size.
Okay. And then, then I got a random question, because I have kids. If you have a family and you're in the zone, do you bring your own car seat on and off? Or I assume there's something like that to refer to the different needs of the different riders that are going to be there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That's a great question. Children under the age of five, we're going to ask that whoever is traveling with them bring a car seat and install it themselves. The, the drivers are not authorized to do that. And any child under the age of five in a car seat is also free, as long as they are traveling with a fare-paying customer and another passenger.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. I know I live in this zone, so.
Yes, you do.
So I'll probably be using it, or I'd like to use it, so.
You hope you do.
So, yeah, so I appreciate it. I think, like I said, I think it'll be a great, a great addition to our transit here locally in Goodyear. So I appreciate all your hard work. I know it's been, been a lot.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Kano.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to make a comment. It's been very exciting to see this come from a high-level idea to now fruition, and I wanted to thank you for being such a good steward of this project. And certainly, I know you've had a team helping, but you're, you're definitely the cheerleader and the, the expert on this. And so it's, it's going to be great for our city. And I know that there'll probably be some bumps and obstacles when it first starts up, but I'm confident that you'll be able to overcome them, and I hope that it's wildly successful.
Mayor, Councilmember Kano, thank you. Actually, when I was going through the presentation over the weekend, I did get a little emotional. This is really exciting for me to actually see us directly serving so many residents that really need this service. The marriage of the studies that we've done, it, it was synergy of some kind, so we're, we're really happy, and thank you very much for your comment.
Councilmember Lortano.
I want to thank you for all your hard work on transit. I think this is a great program. I like the fact that people, especially if you have disabilities, aren't going to be stuck on a bus line, that it has to be one sort of up and down the street, that it will have the ability to take people from different places to where they really need to go and not have to walk or try to struggle to get to, say, the doctor's office from the bus stop. So I think it's wonderful. I think it'll be wildly successful. I think we'll have to be adding rather than you think, and when you add, I, I am not in the zone, obviously, as you know. So I know an area that I would love to add it to, because you hear that from me all the time. So I, I can't wait to see the data come back on this.
Mayor, Councilmember Lortano, thank you. That has been a burden of felt throughout this process, but I will also tell you that because we're working on the transportation master plan, the brilliant minds of HDR are going to be put to the test to look at that distance, which for the benefit of the rest of the council and people watching, there's about eight to 10 miles of, of, of street where there really are no opportunities to collect fares. That creates a challenge to come up with an efficient way to serve the community, but we do have some ideas, and we're going to bounce them off our friends at HDR. HDR is also under contract at Valley Metro, so they have a very skilled, very deep transit staff, and that is something we're going to put to the test with Australia. We definitely need to serve that community.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes, I'd like to know, is there a cap on the number of riders you can have every day from Goodyear?
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, no, there isn't. We will, the, the vehicles, so we've got two wheelchair-accessible vehicles and a spare. The spare does not have the wheelchair option, but the vehicles will, the wheelchair-accessible vehicles can take one wheelchair, three to four passengers in addition to the wheelchair in that vehicle. And then the, the vehicle that does not have the wheelchair accessibility option, we're still working on that. Supply chain has made it very challenging to find vans, passenger vans, right now, but we're expecting five to six people per van. One of our metrics does involve trying to get more shared rides, trying to fill the vehicles. So it's our goal to fill the vehicles all day long.
What's your estimate per day?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I would assume you would have an estimate if you're figuring out like this.
It's, with all due respect, Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Campbell.
Maybe 35 or 40 per day?
I apologize, I can't come up with an estimate, because we just don't know how many people we're going to, are going to be able to use the service.
All right. My next question is, can we get a copy of the presentation? Because for some reason, it wasn't attached to my agenda, and I did not get the zone map until you showed it tonight, and I haven't really seen the zone map. It's too little to look at.
Absolutely.
So does it encompass north subdivision and historic Goodyear?
Yes.
Both of those?
Yes, it does.
So then it would also, how far north does it go?
It go, so the perimeter, I can tell you the perimeter.
No, it goes to the hospital.
It does. So on the north end, it's McDowell Road. On the west end, it's Cotton Lane.
Cotton Lane, and then?
It's on your, it should be on your screen now. The south end.
Yeah, but it's, it's too little.
I apologize.
I guess I'm blind.
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I can't read the streets.
On the south end, it's MC85. And then on the east end, it's the city limits, because it's not a defined boundary.
And then it goes, and you said it goes to McDowell?
Correct.
So from McDowell south to MC-85?
That is correct.
Perfect. Okay. And then to the east, it goes to where?
To this, on the east end, it's the city limits, and I can't give you a defined line because.
Kind of like Dyser, because half of us are.
Historic Goodyear falls a rather erratic line, but all of historic Goodyear is in there.
Okay, great. So I'm assuming you're going to do an all-out push to all of the neighborhoods affected to tell them that these rides are now available or will be available?
We are actually doing that ahead of the launch of the service.
What the cost will be, because that would be great.
Absolutely.
I'm sure there's folks, I do know of folks that have no transportation at all.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, and my last question is, can we get a monthly report or a quarterly report on how many riders per day in Goodyear? Because we, we never can get a good count. We get these thousands and thousands and thousands of people, and we know they're not all Goodyear.
Right, right.
So.
Absolutely.
And that way, we can judge if we need to increase it or add more money. We have to be really strategic with this, because if we do it right, it'll be great. And if we screw it up, it's just not going to work.
We're going to give you a monthly report at minimum.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Brey?
Christine, to that, what were the three things you said you were tracking as you're doing this?
Just as an example, we are looking at average onboard perform, average onboard time. So the time you're in the vehicle from the time you board to where you get to your destination, 20 minutes or less. On-time performance, at least 90%. And then percent of users with failed searches due to high demand. In other words, if they go on their app and they're trying to decide if they can use the service to get where they need to go, and it takes longer, or the search fails, in other words, you get a message that says, "Sorry, we can't, we can't accommodate this request," we want to see less than 5% of those types of searches. So this, this software captures that information.
I'm guessing, then, we'll also capture from where these people are coming from and where they're going to?
Yes, it does.
And we can report that in the monthly report?
That would be in the report, yes, sir.
As well. And then, is there any way to find a calculation as to, I mean, we're obviously subsidizing their travel, right, they're paying the fare, but we're subsidizing it. So is there a way?
You're correct.
To capture that number, to understand, are we, you know, on average with other public transportation, are we above, below, just so that we understand how many more public dollars we may need or not need, or do we need to raise the fare, that type of thing?
Mayor, Councilmember Brey, that is a great question. If we haven't figured, if we haven't added that to the scope of our metrics, we're going to add it. I love that data. That sounds fantastic. So, yes, we will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, with the, I guess, question of 400E, where that's going, I think cities, to be honest with you, are going to have to get more creative with transportation. And I like this idea, and it's a good way to start. That's what I'm looking forward to, some of your, you know, stats as they come back in, to see how it's being used. Because I really believe we're going to have to get more creative to address some of these issues as this goes forward. So with that, I see no more. Let's see, we've got no more on here. Can we get a vote up going here?
The votes have all been entered.
Thank you. Passes seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Next item on the business, consider approving amending to Article 3-12 to the recognizing new employee groups and United Goodyear Firefighter, UGFF, and Goodyear Police Officers Association, GYPO8. Go ahead and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lyman Lockett, Human Resources Director. Tonight, I'm here to present a recommendation to adopt resolution, resolution and an amendment to Article 3, Section 12 of the ordinance. This requested change will, in effect, recognize ambulance EMTs, paramedics, fire battalion chiefs, and police lieutenants as eligible groups under the meet and confer and meet and discuss process, respectively. Some background on the actions that have preceded this request. In September of 2004, Goodyear voters passed Proposition 408, which removed prohibitive language regarding collective bargaining, and provided city council the right to govern by ordinance the process of setting employee wages, working hours, benefits, and working conditions. In March of 2005, city council adopted ordinance number 2005-937, which authorized the city to recognize certain groups of employees for collective bargaining. At that time, two employee groups were recognized, police employee group and a fire employee group. Most recently, the most recent change occurred in October of 2011, when city council adopted ordinance 11-1249, establishing the meet and discuss, meet and confer process. This process is currently in effect today. The ordinance also recognized sworn police employees up to police sergeant and sworn fire employees up to fire captain as the only employee groups covered under the ordinance. Today's request to expand the employee groups recognized in the ordinance is triggered by the introduction of ambulance operations. Due to the categorization of ambulance EMTs and paramedics as first responders and the natural career path to fire service, it is recommended that ambulance EMTs and paramedics be included as an employee group represented by the sworn fire employee organization. And lastly, our review of covered positions also recognized that fire battalion chiefs and police lieutenants are uniquely positioned in a management role and also as an emergency responder. The role also is aligned in a natural career progression from positions that are currently covered by the employee group. Therefore, we recommend recognizing battalion chiefs and lieutenants as eligible employee groups for the meet and discuss process only. The meet and discuss process does not result in an MOU. That concludes my presentation. I'm open to questions you may have.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak?
See and none. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Ordinance 2022-2272 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2022-2272, declaring a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Amendment to Article 3-12, City of Goodyear, Meet and Discuss, Meet and Confer of the City of Goodyear Code of Ordinances.
Looking for a motion in a second, 2022-2272. I see a motion and a second. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
I have a question. Can you explain to me why we're not going to recognize a battalion chief and a lieutenant at this time, or are they not included?
They are under the meet and discuss.
I know, but under the meet and?
And the meet and discuss, the thought behind this is they are in that unique role of management, as well as a first responder. So it's a unique position. The meet and discuss offers them the opportunity to bring forward a proposal. So it's a similar process, but it doesn't result in a memorandum of understanding. But they certainly have their voice and their unique aspects of their, whether it be compensation or working conditions, that they'll have the opportunity to bring forward.
Because they are very unique, because they are first responders, and they usually are out there on the lines. So they should be treated equally like everyone else in the fire service.
Indeed. And I think the distinction there, that management role does offer a unique distinction. And we think that this is the best way to provide them both opportunities to be able to negotiate, as well as to act in their management capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, I appreciate you bringing it forward. With all the newer groups coming with an ambulance in service and things like that, I think it's important to always update and include them into the same, same MOU as the rest of the, rest of the groups. So I appreciate your hard work, putting it together and getting everybody into the same, into the same group here. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Let's see, no further discussion. Clerk, open the voting.
I'm down.
Good thing it's in an auditor box.
The votes have all been entered.
Thank you. Motion carries, seven to zero.
No clapping.
No clapping. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance number 2022-1558 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2022-1558, amending Goodyear City Code, Article 3-12, City of Goodyear, Meet and Discuss, Meet and Confer, updating eligible employee groups, providing for corrections, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
Will the council please enter a motion in a second to adopt ordinance 2022-1558?
Yeah, I already did.
Done. Open for council discussion. None. All right, let's see, go to vote.
The votes have all been entered.
All right, motion carries, seven to zero. All right, with that, let's see what we've got. Does the council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events? Go ahead, Councilmember Loretano.
I have two things. Several of us attended the 75th anniversary ball for the U.S. Air Force, and I have this up here for the mayor. We were a table sponsor, so the Air Force gave us a beautiful plaque. I guess it's metal, it's very heavy, so don't drop it, okay? And then, can I ask the city manager for something else?
Let's see if there's anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, I went to the roundup that supported some nonprofits in the area with the Mavericks. And, yeah, it was a great event, too. I'd be interested to see if the city manager has the numbers on attendance there, because I think it was probably record-breaking, because there were a lot of people there. So thank you for the staff, thank you to police and fire that supported the event, because I think it was a lot. They're looking at maybe even doing a bigger event somewhere, so maybe to figure out how to keep them in Goodyear and house, house that event still here with the amount of people that turned out for it. So I thought it was a good event, and a lot of people, a lot of people were there staying, coming to Goodyear. So that's what I had. Thank you.
Good. Now, is there anything you want to have of the city manager? Go ahead.
I just want to get, I've been getting a lot of concerns from Astoria when the stop, the little flashing crosswalk sign is going to go in by the school. And this can just be, I guess, a paper, just let us know. And there's been a lot of concerns about speeding in that area around the schools, if maybe the chief could look at that, because apparently people don't follow the stop signs there, and it's getting, the parents are getting very concerned. A lot of parents would like to see a stoplight. I know we looked at that before, and it didn't meet the warrants, but maybe if y'all could send out what the warrants are, it would help me explain to it where we're at, when it was last looked at, you know, and what it's missing before a stoplight can be put there. Because I know we all looked at it before, so will you just get an update on that, and I can get that out to the community, where we are and what that's going to be?
Let you know the chief acknowledges that.
Oh, I think, I didn't see you over there.
Yeah.
Behind the giant statue.
Yeah, behind the giant plaque that you put there. All right, Councilmember Campbell?
I have two things. The first thing is that I just wanted to let council know that Nathan Torres and Mike Vettel did an outstanding job at the National Park and Recreation Association Conference, that had park and recreation folks from all over the country at the Phoenix Convention Center, and they talked about our gorgeous Goodyear Rec Center, and they just did a great job. And I was very proud of them. And then, my, I have two requests to the city manager. Number one, did we ever decide, or did we answer the, these seniors that came and wanted the name change for Astoria School, did we do anything on that? And the second thing is, I just was wondering, if we didn't do anything, can we talk about doing something? Remember, they wanted to change the name. The road changed, the street, it was called, what, Coyote Ants something?
Hustler Way or something?
Something, and it had nothing to do with the school. And remember, the seniors came and said, "Could we please change the name of the street?" And it's got to be pretty simple, I would think. But, and we need to, we need to do something with it, since they took time out and came before council and presented their case very eloquently.
I'd be glad to get you a status update on that.
Good, thank you very much. And that's it.
Okay, with that, city manager have anything for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As Vice Mayor mentioned, the West Valley Mavericks hosted their annual Roundup Food Truck Festival on Saturday at the Goodyear Ballpark. The event drew an estimated crowd of 15,000 people, which is the largest event to date that has been held at the Goodyear Ballpark. There were 50 food trucks on site, two bands, and a kid zone. And the West Valley Mavericks were extremely pleased with the turnout and are looking forward to start planning for next year's event. Next, I'd like to invite the public to our Goodyear Rocks event this next Saturday, October 1st. It's the third annual Goodyear Rocks, and it highlights emerging bands who will take the stage from 5:30 to 9:30 at the Goodyear Recreation Campus. There will be food trucks, giveaways, and live artwork. Thank you very much.
Definitely looking forward to that event, okay? Work session on October 3rd, beginning at 5:00 PM, followed by a regular meeting, and then a special meeting after the regular meeting. Up next, we will be entering a special meeting. There is no further business on this one. This meeting's adjourned.